Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call the city council meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Patton? Smith.
With five members answered in the roll, we do have a quorum and we're prepared to do business. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, invincible, for liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'd like to call Pastor Stokes up to offer a word of prayer as we start the meeting.
Good evening, thank you Mayor. Let us pray, our God and our Father, we thank you for your goodness, your kindness, your mercy. We thank you for allowing us to come to this eighth month, this tenth day, in the land of the living. We know it is of no goodness of our own. We ask tonight, oh God, that you continue to strengthen each of us, continue to give us a mind to do your will. We bless you for the health of our bodies, the sanity of our minds, and the quality of our relationships. Your word declares to us that we should trust you with all of our hearts, lean not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways acknowledge you, and you would direct our paths. So we ask you tonight that you continue to direct our paths, and we'll give you glory in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Stokes. Before we go into public comment, I'd like to provide, I will start this tonight, and in every council meeting going forward, we'll make sure that we update the public when people come before the city council, to ensure that we're answering, responding to requests. At the last meeting, there were four public speakers. First public speaker came up regarding home flooding and a proposed lift station at our house. The inspectors determined that there was a plumbing job for overhead sewer. Inspection Services and met with the contractor to have the homeowner apply for sewer user And as of the date of our last meeting, we had not received the application for sewer rebate, and there was never a denial for overhead permit that was communicated. The residents stated that there was a denial of an overhead sewer, and that's what we found out, is that there was never application received. The next person that spoke at public forum complained about a house and claimed that the city of Calumet City owned the house. According to our records, the city of Calumet City does not own the house. The house is owned by CCRD. Calumet City has liens on the house. We filed multiple liens on the property. This week, through Director Tillman, we sent the property to our attorney for a media demo, which will appear at the next city council meeting, to start the demo process. The next person that came up asked about enforcement with our contractors and tree service companies, who have not been licensed in Calumet City. That was not true. Inspection Services and our Clerk's Office, through our Director Cleo Jones, they make sure that everyone has a license. If anyone identified does not have a license, citations have been issued, we will get the number of citations that have been issued. The last person that came up spoke about the Green Alley project. This, and I believe the person is here tonight, this is an alley project that was a one-of-a-kind project that was started in partnership with our office, the Alderman, and also with MWRD. I can state that this project has garnered a lot of attention around the state of Illinois, because I believe, Matt, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're the only community that's doing the Green Alley project?
There are other communities doing it, but we're one of the few in the south side of Chicago. And then also, too, we have been asked by several other entities to engage in other Green Alley programs as well. That would include private, public partnerships, Green Alleys, and then also to programs through the county, and green print, which we're speaking with them about assisting us with other additional Green Alleys.
And so, tonight on the agenda, we have a request for more Green Alleys, and our goal is to work with the Alderman to do more alleys in Calumet City, as we just received additional funding from Cook County and also from MWRD.
Yes, Mayor. The MWRD has been a big advocate of doing Green Alleys here in the city, and they've been very supportive of the initiative that has come down from this administration.
So, again, I want to make sure that when residents come up, we don't like to get into back and forth when residents are asking us to respond to requests. We want to make sure we investigate the requests, respond accordingly, and provide detailed information on their requests. So, appreciate everyone coming to the council meeting and sharing your concerns. Please don't wait. You know, we've had requests of people who said they've had complaints in for five or six years, and we want to resolve complaints. If you waiting five or six years to resolve a complaint, please don't do that. We want to make sure that we resolve it. It's something we can do immediately. We want to encourage all of our departments to make sure we respond accordingly. So, again, I want to thank our departments for all of their quick responses, but also want to thank the residents for bringing items that we can resolve together. So that said, we will move on, on the agenda, to public forum. Is there anyone who would like to address public forum? If so, please step to the mics, speak clearly into the mic, state your name, and we'll make sure we get any issue resolved.
There's no issue, so, which probably makes you happy. But anyway, I'm George Grinchik, 457 Freeland. I would just like to invite the city administration, the council, everyone in the chambers tonight, and all of our vast, public access viewing audience to Shepherd Fest. And Shepherd Fest is the hybrid child of the former St. Andrews Summer Fest and St. Victor's Victor Fest. It's going to be a three-day event on the 18th, 19th, and 20th of August. It'll be held on the Our Lady of Knock grounds, that's at 501-163rd. There will be, last year, we had a one-day event, this year, we're back to a three-day event. There will be live music, there will be lots of food, there will be a car show on Saturday at 2 o'clock on the grounds, there'll be games for kids. It'll be a little bit like the two festivals we used to have. There's not a carnival next year, we'll see. But we want to invite everybody there. I left some flyers on the table with the times, Friday, the 18th, it's from 5 to 11; Saturday, 2 to 11, with the car show starting at 2; and on Sunday, from 11 to 10. I'd also like to thank the city for its cooperation and help in putting our event on, Park District also. So, hopefully, I can say a little prayer for good weather, and hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Favorit, and give the, send the flyer to Joel and Ed Steve, so we can post it on our city website as well.
I'm sorry, do I give them to who?
Joel up front and Ed Steve, so we can post the flyer on our city website as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will.
Is there anyone else who would like to address public forum tonight? Not, we should move on to item five on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. The minutes, as so presented on the agenda, was sent to the Alderman. Are there any questions or correction to the minutes as presented? If not, can someone make a motion to approve the minutes as presented on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes pass five to zero. Thank you council for that. Next on the agenda, reports of standing committees, finance, Alderman Gardner.
No reports tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Public safety, Alderman Williams.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you Alderman. We'll wait and see if Alderman Patton has a report. Ordinances and resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. The ordinance and resolutions committee held a meeting on August 8th, 2013, to discuss six items. First was a discussion about the transitional housing ordinance. The committee recommended several regulations aimed at strengthening this ordinance to promote public safety. The second item was tabled until all committee members could be present, since certain committee members specifically requested that item. The third item was a discussion regarding truck parking on various Calumet City-owned roads. The committee recommended increasing the fine for large commercial trucks that are illegally parked overnight, and amending the ordinance to allow towing of repeat offenders. The fourth item was a discussion regarding changes to the crime-free housing ordinance. The committee recommended adding language to the ordinance aimed at clearing up certain ambiguous language. The fifth item was a discussion regarding an ordinance amending Article 17 Home Occupant's Permit. The committee tabled this item, so members could do further research. And the last item was a discussion to change the mobile food ordinance, and again, the committee tabled this item, so members can do further research. The full meeting members, the full meeting minutes will be on the next council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Health, education, welfare, Alderman woman Wilson.
Thank you. This is a reminder that Saturday, August 13th, is the health, education, I'm sorry, Sunday, August 13th, is the Health, Education, and Welfare's Back-to-School Resource Fair from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, in Memorial Park, located at 612 Whitworth Avenue. Thank you to everyone who has donated and participated to make this event a success. Thank you to the Black Rodeo for your partnership in bringing the petting zoo, pony rides and horse rides on Sunday. We are appreciative of our community partners who are bringing resources. So if you need food, come eat. If you need mental and behavioral health services, come get that resource. Medicaid, there are changes to Medicaid and CHIP, we're going to have people out there who can assist you. If you're in need of a job, we have businesses that are hiring on the spot. Come get you a job. It is more than school supplies, but if you need those, we'll have those, too. Come on out. It is a full weekend for health, education, and welfare in Calumet City, so I encourage everyone to visit every location over this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete?
Just a brief announcement on today's agenda, we will continue to supplement our Public Works fleet. I asked for the support on these items, under financial items, from the city council. And also, just to give some background on what we are purchasing, we have six trucks with plow packages to help with our winter months, and we'll have one with a tree trim and chipper package to help with our tree trimming and chipping as well. Again, we'll continue to find areas and funding. We did find funding through our recent bond and also through CARES Act funding, so trying to stay creative and supplementing the fleet of Public Works. That's all I had this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Item eight on the agenda, informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Item D is Track and Trap Wildlife Report. Just so the residents know that we have a program for free trapping wildlife. It's on our website if you want to utilize, and from the report, residents are utilizing the program. You can download or get the app right on our website, or we can send you the information if you have issues with wildlife. So again, we want to thank Track and Trap for not only working with Calumet City, but this is a free program that the city council started for residents who have issues with wildlife in or around their houses. Information items, does anyone have any questions regarding information items A8A through E? If not, can we make a motion to accept these items and place it on file? Motion made by Alderman Gardner?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you council. The next item, our new business?
Mayor, may we do the committee reports?
I'm sorry.
I mean, the Alderman report?
I didn't do that on purpose. So, I didn't do that on purpose. So, let's go back to the city council reports. Alderman Gardner, we'll start on this side, fifth ward report.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. Couple of quick announcements. Monday, my office, in partnership with Thornton Township Assessor Cassandra Holbert Elston, will be hosting a tax appeal and estate planning workshop, starting promptly at 6:30 to 8:30 PM, at the American Legion Post 330, 950 Legion Drive. If you need more information, please contact my office, 708-891-8195. Light refreshments will be served, and you can also bring a copy of your property tax bill. Appeals will be filed on-site. Also, there will be an attorney there to explain estate planning, if you have any questions. Second, Lincoln Elementary will be hosting their annual back-to-school event on Saturday, August 12th, between the hours of 11:00 and 2:00 PM, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The address there is 410-157th Street, 410-157th Street, Lincoln Elementary. Also, if you have any other questions, comments, concerns regarding issues in the ward, please continue to report them to my office, 708-891-8195. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you Alderman. Fourth ward, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First and not a God that makes all things possible. Just want to remind the residents about the Third and Fourth Ward Annual Back-to-School Picnic, that is just coming Saturday, August 12th, starting at 12:00 PM, and I will defer to my colleague Alderman Tillman for more information.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Tillman, third ward?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all the residents that attended this past Monday's Town Hall meeting. All concerns stemming from the meeting will be addressed in the coming weeks, if they already haven't been addressed. I want to thank Public Works Deputy Commissioner Scott, Director Tillman, Chief Colash, and Chief Botcher for attending the meeting and doing a really good job fielding questions. The next meeting in September is canceled due to Labor Day, so the meeting after that will be October 2nd, first Monday of the month, October 2nd, 6:30, at Downey Park Field House. And as Alderman Williams stated, the Seventh Annual Back-to-School BBQ is this Saturday at noon. We'll have a lot of things there for everybody, DJ, bounce house, obstacle course, book bags, and school supply giveaway, a suit giveaway, free government cell phone for those that qualify, games, prizes, a special performance by the 40-plus Double Dutch Club, and more. So we just encourage residents to come out. Again, that is this Saturday, Downey Park, 300 Jeffrey, starting at noon, ending at 4:00. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Second ward, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Monday, August 14th, is the August Block Program Meeting. It will be held from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at Higher Ground Community Church, that's 415 Saginaw. Thank you to all of the residents who are starting block clubs. My concern is that I've not seen any of you at meetings, council meetings, my meetings, other block club meetings. Please come out and be engaged in all of the meetings in our ward, so we are all on the same page about the information that we're distributing. On August 12th, there's the Campbell Block Club Party, and that is on the block of Campbell, inside the second ward. August 13th, again, is Health, Education, and Welfare's Back-to-School Resource Fair, again, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, in Calumet Memorial Park. And then, we're back at Calumet Memorial Park on August 19th, for the Calumet Memorial Park District Carnival. They're having a back-to-school carnival, please bring the children. Should you have any questions, please call my office at 708-586-4990. You can call me or text me. My 1:00 AM call is, I cannot answer the phone. If it's a dire need, please call 911. If you need emergency services, and it is not really an emergency, 708-868-2500. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. First ward, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to use my time to talk about two items. One to piggyback off what the mayor was mentioning earlier about our Green Alley projects. Again, we're continuing that partnership with MWRD. We are proposing four new alleys, one of which will be in the first ward. We hope to, that preliminary tests allow us to get that completed this year. But just to put in perspective, these four alleys are estimated to deter 250,000 gallons of water from our stormwater system. Again, this is on top of our efforts recently, as a city council, to alleviate flooding issues in the city. As you all know, again, with our bond, the city council has approved $10 million, $10 million to go towards sewers, which, I'm not sure if we confirmed that match yet of $10 million, but $20 million will go towards, with a $10 million match, so $20 million to go to our sewer infrastructure. The other item I would like to quickly touch on is the, on the agenda today, we are approving properties. This is something that started some years ago, and has really kind of gained some traction, thanks to Alderman Gardner, our Economic Development Department, no cash bid system that was put into place by the mayor and our legal team. Again, over the years, the first ward has suffered from more than the other wards. First and Fifth have the most vacant lots, the most vacant homes. That's because we are the oldest part of town. We've seen the strategy of just demolishing these houses in hopes of new construction, which we haven't seen over the years. So this new strategy of trying to acquire these houses before they get to run down, and package these properties and try to sell them, get them at a reasonable price, so that they can be flipped, remodeled, you know, package that with a first-time homebuyer program, I think is a better solution for these, for this issue of vacant housing in the ward. So excited to hear about that, and again, thank you for everyone that's been working towards these programs and moving them forward again. So, thank you. That's all I had this evening.
Thank you Alderman. Item nine, our new business items. Under item nine, A3, this item should appear under financial matters, so we will put a corrective motion on the next agenda. For tonight's meeting, I would ask the council to approve it, but before doing so, I would turn to our city engineer, not only for explanation, but also the total cost breakdown, plus the city's match. Matt, can you provide that?
The city has been approached by the MWRD regarding the Green Alley program for projects. It would be the four alleys totaling approximately $740,000. The MWRD would be contributing 80%, up to an amount of $592,000, so the city would have to provide the match of $148,000 for the 20%. We're currently looking into other ways that maybe we could pull in other partners to maybe help offset some of those costs, so that we can stretch some of the city dollars a little bit more, and in preliminary discussions with entities that want to join in on the partnership.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions on items nine, A1 through seven?
Not questions, but I would like to have nine, A4, and five amended to add address to those poles that go up.
Which ones, Alderman?
For 499 Calhoun and 398 Saginaw, or in 4, 9A4 and 9A5. If we can just, if Public Works can also add the address to their handicap pole that goes up in our ward, because we have a senior ward, we have a lot of handicap placards, so anyone with a handicap placard can park at a handicap designated site, but if it has their address, it sort of limits that.
So, is your motion to approve it as amended?
As amended, yes, sir.
Motion made to approve items nine, A1 through seven, amend items four and, what was the other, Alderman?
Five.
Four and five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's, item nine, A passes, five zero. Under building permits, we have building, new fence construction. Are there any questions regarding the new fence construction, as appears on the agenda? If not, can someone make a motion to approve building permits, new fence construction?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
This motion passes to approve new fence construction, five zero. Thank you city council. The next item on the agenda are resolutions and ordinances. Council, we discussed these items that appear on the agenda for the term sheets, for purchasing these properties. Does anyone have any questions regarding the items that appear? This is part of, as Alderman Navarrete and Alderman Gardner said, our no cash bid policy, and our policy to be aggressive with these properties, and I want to commend community economic development, our finance team, and our legal team, for actually going after these properties. If there's no questions, Alderman Tillman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item C as presented.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
The financial matters, we have to correct Financial Matters 35, it should state 2023, Are there any other questions regarding financial matters, D1 through 43? Not Alderman Gardner?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Financial Matters D1 through 43.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you. Financial matters are approved, five zero. We are at unfinished business. Alderman Navarrete?
Just a reminder, to piggyback off George Grinchik's public comment, Jesus Shepherd of Soul Parish will be hosting the Shepherd's Fest. Again, a combination of what used to be the Victor Fest here at St. Victor Church, and the Family Fest at St. Andrews, is now combined and be hosted at Our Lady of Knock Church. That'll be next week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 18th, 19th, and 20th. Please come out and support. It'll be food, music, games, and plenty of stuff to do to support. Be a good time. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, unfinished business?
Thank you. Again, should you have any questions or concerns throughout the ward, please contact me at 708-586-4990. If you're not receiving any communication from my office, you, please text me your number, your email address, and your house. I've been popping up all throughout the ward, having great conversations. Thank you to the residents of the second ward. We sent out some beautiful awards for beautiful gardens and flowers. We're going to do it again on the east side of town. So, please, 708-586-4990. Also, thank you to Dr. Fian. He is a mental health professional here in Calumet City. He has offered to support all 13-year-old males who would like to play the sport of football by sponsoring the Calumet City Chargers 13-year-old level, which means that that level is free. You would be offered the opportunity to learn the sport, as well as receive some mental health services, and have an opportunity for mentorship through the Tomorrow's New Foundation. So thank you, Dr. Fian, for being a supporter of Calumet City. Should you have a child that fits that category, 13-years-old, please visit calumetcitychargers.com for more information. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Third ward, Alderman Tillman? Thank you, Alderman. Third Ward, Alderman Tillman?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourth Ward, Alderman Williams?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner, unfinished business?
Yes, very briefly, I would like to let the family of Denise Fields, and we're praying for Denise Fields and the loss of her son this week, and also, I would like to take this opportunity to wish my colleague, Fourth Ward Alderman Ramon Williams, a happy birthday.
Do not play no music.
I demand that it be played. It's tradition.
We not dancing, we not doing none of that.
Alderman has requested we do not play Stevie Wonder. Happy birthday again. So we want to wish you a happy birthday.
I demand it be played during Jazz in the Grass.
We will definitely take that into consideration. There being, well, our city attorney has graciously not scheduled executive session tonight, so there being no further business to come before the city council. Is there a motion to adjourn at 6:30 6:00 p.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Wilson. We are adjourned at 6:30 6:00 p.m. Thank you, city council.
All in favor?